We've got May 7 and May 21.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes from May 7 to May 24, May 21st.
Okay.
Okay, any comments or edits? You guys remind me I'll ask them when they get here, we can all consider if they have meaningful edits. But for now, there's a motion to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Great, maybe that's all we can do.
Do it in a review?
Yeah, we can do that. So, yes, if I add, should I just write E's on the drive?
I agree. Yeah. I did actually write the letters on my agenda and put them in the drive that way because we were putting so many things in, I didn't want to confuse people. So, four E will be handbook changes. And then F and G are just quick. F is fiscal year 24 update. G is 2022 audit. And then we need five A for childbearing needs and a five B for staff enrollment. And we do have public appointments at the end, but it's already on there. So I think that's it.
All right.
To the drive?
That's okay.
Well, I find we have the minutes.
Yes, you can.
Because I am. Because when I was at T R S last week for the concert, I connected.
Yes.
And my phone did that thing and said, hey, this password has been found on the daily. So I emailed Josh for it. It's like, because that makes visitor password. I'm sorry. No worries.
Thank you.
I forgot about that. It's okay. I did ask Josh to tell me when they changed it so I could put it in my phone. As they're not here at meetings, so I don't know what it is. Can you use the password?
So both chartering and staff enrollment are not public?
Yes, but I figured doing this five A and five B, that way they'll be after on the book. I started changing the numbers for six and seven.
We'll be on until 6:40 and then we'll start with your stuff and we can revisit. That's true. We can do public comment.
Public comment?
Yeah. You got 15 minutes all yourself? Don't care.
Well.
You got the time clock.
For the record, my name is Jerry Fleury. I'm the Chair of Pembroke C I P. I'm here this evening because of item 4B on your agenda. And I was hoping to be able to speak at item 4B when it comes up. There are a number of strategies that we're putting together for C I P this year that the school board should be aware of what those are. And so if that meets with the approval, I would like to be able to speak when you get to 4B.
All right.
Do you want to have Josh start going through it? It's in the drive.
Yeah, let's probably do that. We'll move the. Let Josh grow up again. We'll turn up Jerry Philson.
Okay, good evening. So here to talk about the 2526 C I P requests. The first fund would be our vehicle replacement fund. We started that a couple of years back per the recommendation of the C I P committee. We were putting $7,000 away a year for it, but we've asked to up that to $10,000 moving forward. That offsets the cost for the district pickup truck and the district van, and it was not funded this past year. So that's item number one. We are not asking for a withdrawal from that fund next year, just in a deposit. Moving on, we'll talk about the school building capital reserve fund. We've been pretty consistent with asking for $155,000. This fund takes care of many items within our buildings. With that, for next year, we would be asking for our annual replacement flooring of $20,000 and for a roof replacement at Pembroke Academy for $140,000. Specifically on the roofs, we're doing much better of itemizing our roofs here in the district. The academy has been pieced together since 1937, and up until years ago, there was no plan of attack on that. So we've got it pretty well itemized to every other year until we get through the older roofs and then we'll move on from there. So that would be for the school building capital reserve fund. Next is the school site.
Yep, so you said, so we'd be doing 160 out and we request 155 in?
Yes. Next would be the school district technology fund. We've been pretty consistent with asking for $10,000 for a deposit within that fund. As I told the committee, I don't really oversee that, but I am here talking about that deposit as I do with them as well. So that's for servers, that's for anything that could come up throughout the year. I do know you, the board, have used a little bit of that throughout the time from there. So moving on with that, we have the school site improvement fund. We are asking for the $200,000 for the Pembroke Academy track that was not funded this past year, but was half funded the year prior. We still believe that track is going to cost us anywhere from 400 to 450,000 dollars. We don't believe it's gone past that point yet, but that could happen. That would fund the other half of it, and we, as I've said the last couple of years, we can see the end of the life on that track and are trying to get ahead of that. Next up would be the equipment capital reserve fund. So we've been pretty consistent asking to fund $25,000 into that fund. We did not fund it this past year. And with that, this past year, there are a couple of requests that, one, the camera replacement, I can probably push off till next year. But number two, the riding floor scrubber, I probably can't. The fund can hold that, still hold that request. I probably, and more than likely, will be coming to you guys over the summer, early next school year with all the details on that scrubber, just to pre, get you preempted on that. With that, we would look to fund $25,000. In '25, '26, we would like to do our camera maintenance in servers, which this past year I was, we were going to ask for 25,000. As we're due for some server upgrades, we believe we can slide that over to next year and make it through this year. We also had the Pembroke Academy riding floor scrubber on the list for next year, but we believe we can push that out as well. So I will be sliding those across, but still coming for that riding floor scrubber for Three Rivers, which is approximately 15 or 16 years old and have had some pretty significant fixes. And again, we can see its end of the life on that. Next, the special education trust fund. Again, I'd say to you, I'd say to the committee, I don't really talk about that, but I do know the board funded, and as long as there is, is the funds to fund that, there will be a significant deposit, which I will add to the list once the year end has happened that we know whether we're funding or not funding. And then same with instructional materials. It's not really mine, but it's there on the sheet. Questions, concerns, and compliments?
Wow. Wow. I say that to the baseball boys all the time. So that's, you know, basically this standard stuff we see every year. But I do know, I want to, I'd like some information on the gator.
Yeah, so the gator's next on the list, but I'd be happy to go into it now.
I didn't, I'm concerned about what happened to it.
Do you want the?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Neither one, neither one.
Okay, my reason for coming this evening is to make sure that C I P can hit the ground running this summer. We're scheduled to begin meeting in late July. There are two tentative dates for presentation on school items. The first being August the 8th and the second, August the 15th. It's not likely that we will need both of those evenings unless discussion really gets hot and heavy on the 8th. But we've got the time allocated anyway. One of the concerns that we have for C I P, both the school district and for the town this year is that capital reserve funds did not get funded largely. With the, with the cuts that you took to your operating budget, it would be astounding if you have funds left over to fund your capital reserves and the ones that were voted favorably, your first one was special ed. I don't know if you're going to have, be able to fund that, much less the others. So the message that C I P has for all of the departments is you've taken a hit on your funding expectations for capital reserves. So what is, what impact does that have? What are your plans to reschedule, perhaps delaying items? And it sounds like from hearing Josh's report that he's already thinking along those lines. There was an email sent out, I believe Josh would have gotten that back probably in late April, early May, asking anyone to think along those lines. What are you going to do? How are you going to recover those amounts? How are you going to push back various items? One of the things that we want to look at, I've read in the press that it's possible that Pembroke may be getting an electric bus. If in fact, you do get that bus and it belongs to you, at some point, it will have to be replaced. So that's an item where you would want to look out maybe a decade, and that's probably going to have a big price tag on it. Who knows whether grant money will be available at that time? But it's a kind of an item that ought to go into C I P, perhaps on your vehicle replacement capital reserve. We're also looking for some estimates of things that are going to end up costing the town in general a lot of money. I have a meeting next Monday with the SOAR Commission. They have an $11.6 million mandated upgrade to the SOAR plant in Allenstown, and Pembroke is going to be expected to pay for 55% of that. So that's going to be coming home to visit in some way, shape, or form. The public works garage still is in need of replacement, and it has to be brought up to code for the stormwater MS4 requirements. We're going to reach a point where we're not going to be allowing, be able to allow salty water to drip off our trucks and run down the drain. All of this has got to be properly handled and treated. So the expansion on that is going to be a big ticket. And I mentioned those because we still have the upgrade on the Hill School. We don't know what that's going to cost. We don't know what the, what the district's plans are going forward, but we're looking to see timelines for all of those projects somehow incorporated into the capital reserves so that all of them don't show up on the budgets in March, all at the same time. So that was, essentially, that's the point that I wanted to alert you of the dates that are tentatively set up for the school districts C I P meetings and to give you a broader picture of what's going on across the town. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate you coming. Gene's still our C I P guy. He's going to be M B C rep again next year. Harry's going to be the M B C alternate. So those will be the point people for you guys for communications and whatnot. And I'm assuming you'll, you have one of those dates for school C I P stuff. Oh, yeah. A couple of things you mentioned that I can speak a tiny bit to. Electric bus thing is like, we've barely talked about it. We've been awarded a conditional grant if we so choose. And so that project, if it's a thing, is quite a ways down the line before it even get off the ground. And I don't want to speak out of turn, maybe if she comes in, she can. But I believe that's a lease program. I don't think we would ever actually own those buses, but I'm. But there's lots of details that are far, far, far down there. And then Hill School, we will keep you guys apprised that we know anything. Obviously, what happened in March could have put us in the heels. And that's the piece that we just talked about last meeting, about getting some more Hill School meetings scheduled with the architects and everything to see where the heck we go from here because obviously it's probably going to change plans a little bit. But we'll definitely keep you guys apprised. While we're on sort of a town topic, I just wanted to bring up, I forgot to send a follow-up email, but it looks like the July 11th proposed date to me with the select board was chosen with a 6:30 start time. I'm unlikely to be there. I think I have to leave for around that point. I'm going to think Amy's on the fence. But again, being that the budget people will be available, I think that's, that's most important for you two to be in the room. And we'll have a forum at least. I don't know until probably that week, but, but anyways, July 11th at 6:30.
Do you know, we're posting an agenda?
I believe the select board.
So we just, we can just post that there's, that you're going to be eligible to be.
Yeah, I can confirm, but I believe it's Karen.
I guess Matt has created an agenda at this point.
I just want to make sure your portion is posted for you.
Yeah, now they said, they said we need to post it, they'll post it. I'm actually glad to hear that they chose the other date because of the soft meet. And when I was listening to the meeting, they were saying 5 o'clock on June 20th. And that was, it's going to be hard for a lot of us.
I think there must have just been a miscommunication because Karen and I were still in conversation about even which date and hadn't even got to the start of the conversation yet when I saw David's recap of that meeting that had a suggested date and time on it. So there's wires crossed, I'm sure, but I think of the three dates provided, even the one that didn't turn out to be real, I don't think I can made any of them, so.
I asked.
Awesome. Okay, so I think we can move back then. Well, I guess any questions for Josh or Jerry on C I P stuff? Yeah?
Andy, I do have one comment on the meeting, the joint meeting between the school board and the select board. I think the impetus for that meeting finds its roots in the budget committee. That the budget committee was concerned that there was a certain amount of tension between the two boards. And we thought it would be beneficial if the two boards were able to sit together, largely with everyone present, and just discuss what the concerns were so that it would run more smoothly going forward. That, that was the intent of that. So if you have too many board members that can't make it, it might be a good idea to try to reschedule that at a time when you all can be there. Because if you look at what's to be discussed, it's really, the emphasis, emphasis there is on making sure that there's no animosity, no hidden agendas, that type of thing.
I'll see if Karen can provide me with that agenda. I didn't realize that it was already drawn up. Maybe I just missed it, but I'll keep that in mind. Yeah, appreciate that. Okay, so let's switch back to letter A. This is a really quick one. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up, make sure that everybody was, A, okay with it, and B, some scheduling stuff. So Dave Doherty reached out to me a few weeks ago now. Honestly, we probably should have discussed it in our last meeting, and I got Paul, he sent out a reminder. He was hoping that we would sponsor, and by sponsor, basically just provide a time and post it for the, I'm not sure the official name, the New Hampshire Funding.
Fair Funding, yeah.
Yeah, School, Fair Funding, whatever, Association, or whatever they're called. They do presentations for the communities to discuss how education is funded in New Hampshire and possible avenues to change that for the better. So I guess first, does everybody think that's a good idea? I mean, I picture this as a community engagement thing and a way to get people to understand some of the struggles that we go through, so. So then I guess the other, I think this is like an hour-long type of thing, possibly with Q and A after that. So I pictured it as something that would not happen at a board meeting, it would be a separate thing. But I just want to make sure everybody thought the same, and then if that's, if you guys are all in agreement with that, ask Patty, like, I'm picturing September, October timeframe. So I don't know if there's like a typical good night of the week, if it's not Tuesday. I know you've got stuff in your field and whatever, but. Okay, yeah, if you want. Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, I guess I would, you know, stay away from Friday nights because nobody will come. I'm, I'm thinking everyone's there. Thursday midweek is usually better for people to not be out of town or at football games or whatever. But yeah, yeah, if you want to work with Dave, that'd be fantastic.
The Chaichester Board just posted one.
Oh, great. Cool.
It's very, it's very helpful. I've not been to one in years, but the one that I went to really broke down the way education is funded, so that it was funded, so it was understandable. So I think that's probably, there's still the big implications.
I will create the Pembroke School Board Facebook page. And then I will crosspost this on all the town pages and we'll try to. I mean, I, I would like to see this play on the auditorium. That's probably what I'm thinking that we'll get that many people, but.
There's a fee.
Yeah. Great. Does anybody have any questions about that? Nothing I'll be able to answer. Cool. Okay, so that's A. We already have B. Vehicle replacement. I think that's our gator, yeah?
That is the gator. So unfortunately, there was an accident with the gator. It clipped the side of a fire hydrant, which popped the tire and in turn cracked the transmission. So the reality of it is the transmission fix was roughly, well, it was determined by Primex, our insurance carrier, to be roughly $9,000. The value of the gator was roughly $43, $4400, so they declared the gator a loss. Minus the deductible, they'll be cutting us a check for roughly $3,400, which leads me here in front of you guys to talk about a new gator. The gears are relied upon heavily, A, from, from our facilities crew. They're used within the athletics department, they're used throughout the schools. They're used every day in and out of these facilities, for lack of better words, specifically here and at Three Rivers, but you will see them lugged up to Hill School at times if we're doing playground chips, if we're spreading mulch, et cetera. So I'm here to ask for permission to buy a new gator using our trust funds, our equipment trust funds, which are there for these emergencies, unfortunately. So right now, in the John Deere world, there's two companies. There's Rosenkrantz, who has a couple of shops within the state. And then there's United Ag, which pretty much owns the entire region, for lack of better word. So a bare minimum these days, no bells and whistles. From Rosenkrantz, we can get a gator for $13,720. From United Ag, we can get one for $13,931. The only difference is that United Ag price comes with the beacon light, which might find to be very important. Rosenkrantz missed the, they missed that in the memo, and it was too late to ask me for that upgrade before I presented to you, but the reality of it is that's a $700, $800, $900 upgrade. So I would be here asking for the permission to buy from United Ag.
Questions? I've got a few. I know, I know we've talked about this one before. And maybe it's for Patty. Why, why does the gator fall in equipment rather than vehicles? I know it does, and I know we've talked about this before. Is it because it's not a licensed on-road vehicle?
So we don't put our tractors and our utility vehicles in the replacement vehicle because it doesn't have a license plate.
Okay, that's what I thought, just wanted to make sure. What's the like, typical average lifespan of one of these things?
So we'd like to say we have a 10-year plan on them and hope to get 15.
Correct. We are interested to spend on that one?
You are.
And?
Still need.
Oh, great.
You can authorize Josh to purchase one before you throw any funds. You need to have public care.
And I would do that after July 1st, just to go to the time.
That was my next question. Last one is, is there, I mean, it sounds like you want to go with United anyway, but is there an advantage that they have a location close to us? Does that help with like servicing or anything, or do we not do service?
It does not, unfortunately. We are at the mercy of them. I'd like to sit here and say that since we swapped our items, our equipment over to John Deere's, that they're right down the road, that that does help us. The reality of it is, is any service we do, we found that if we can schedule it to come here, it's, we get much timelier fashion. We get the equipment fixed in a much more quicker way than when we try and bring it to them, which was our, it was our intention when we switched over to John Deere.
That's interesting.
We were, we were bringing Kubotos and we were bringing Toro mowers all over the state. And it just made sense to go down the road. The reality of it is, is the John Deeres we've bought from both, and both have been good to us.
Yes, and Gene?
Yeah, $900 for a beacon?
Yeah, so it's the install, it's the switches. I can get a full yeah. It's the light, it's the structure around the light, it's the switch bag, it's the harness kit, and it's the installation for just, just, just under $800.
Seven or eight, one and more for like $200, like, between the difference between the two companies, so.
I do believe that beacon light pays its worth being on all the time.
Better to not run over students. In my, in my. Weird, but that. Any other questions about the gator? And I think we need a motion to authorize Josh to expand. Can you give that number again from May 11?
It would be 13931.
Uh, yes. Somebody want to make a motion?
Make motion to give Josh permission to purchase the new gator at 13931.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Right. Oh, one last type of questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Thanks for gathering the information. My condolences of the previous gear. Second, receive.
Yeah.
All right, electric bus stop it. I'm assuming we're going to wait and see if Amy shows up for that one because that's her baby, so let's jump to the end.
All right, let's start with Pembroke Hill School. There's not a lot of substantive changes. The underneath, so you'll see the red is when they're striking current language and the purple is the new proposed language. The literacy section was updated because to align with the science of reading that they're doing now instead of literacy collaborative, so that's just been updated for that. And then standardized testing is updated on the way the state delivers the information. Now there's a portal and you get a code for it, it's online and get your student's results. So that's been updated. And then the library section has been updated. Yeah, those are the only two things. Do you want to look at my paper?
You can do it.
Of course, absolutely. Yes, please do.
Can you add an extra, at least first one?
Yes.
Okay, um, any questions or concerns on this? Okay, um, any questions or concerns on this? About the addition of the digital citizenship stuff? Um, okay, then all in favor, group of.
Uh, I'm moved to approve the changes to the Pembroke Hill School handbook.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
One last call for questions, comments? Right, and all in favor approving the changes to the Pembroke Hill School student handbook, please say aye. I have, any opposed, any objections? Great.
Um, so the Pembroke Academy booklet is thicker, but there's a lot of, um, repeat language that was kept in instead of struck. So the, um, the first page is pretty basic, just that if home education students want them to come in and take classes, they need to put their request in writing to Dan, um, but there's an absolutely change to state. Then you can actually skip several pages because it's current language. Um, whole discipline section, uh, go on like five or six pages into where it says proposed in purple, the bottom of the page. I'm not numbered, sorry. Is everybody there? So the disciplinary, um, section with infractions was, there were a few reasons behind the changes. Some of them were updating definitions to meet, you may recall the disciplinary, um, policy changed a few years ago, so some of the definitions were updated. There's more current language, um, especially in the section with, you know, e-cigarettes and drugs and possession and all of those things. Now they match the policy language. Um, there's also some updates to cutting classes and detentions. And skipping classes has been increasing, and the detentions weren't really a deterrent. Um, and students aren't really taking it seriously, and then detention hours were building up and up and up. And deans are chasing students down who owe like ten hours of detention. So there's, um, been a change to the grid for the consequences for cutting class. It used to be two or less would be a detention. Um, and now it's skipping class one to five detentions. Um, it's an office detention for each skipped class. And then it's graduated to, if you're in excess of six to nine classes, you get an in-school suspension for each day that you skipped. And then if it goes to ten to fourteen, you get an in-school suspension, um, of two days for each skipped class. So it's a graduated consequence for that, trying to deter that behavior. Um, then in the grid of this tier three, there's hate speech is added. Um, and then there's this, and the reception that we just went over, the, again, skipping classes. If it's an excessive amount of fifteen plus, for first offense, it's one day out of school, then it's three, and then it's five. And weapons, um, to wooden knives was, there was always a consequence, but it wasn't. So it's just add to the, the consequences, it's always been there. But the next page, the tier four infractions, that's where the definition was expanded. The next section, there's, um, blue is the new language, and that is, um, so there we have students that would skip their detentions but not leave the building, which didn't make a lot of sense. Um, they didn't want to go to the detention, but they didn't want to leave school either. So, um, this has been added so that students have to be picked up by two thirty P M. If you owe detentions and you skip them, you can't just hang around. Um, there is a new section, number four, under in-school suspension, further clarifying that while students are there, they're expected to work on their assignments, um, and that they're expected to turn off and turn in their cell phones, um, or leave their home. Just a couple additions to that section. Um, there's a new section to the dances, and you can skip the first few pages under dances to let's repeat, and then it goes to the language proposed in purple. Um, again, if a home ed student wants to come to the dance, they're still absolutely welcome. Just need to, um, request it in writing, so that we have a list of students. And then we changed the language, um, for dances, that no tickets will be sold at the door. It becomes really difficult to monitor whose current students are and then making sure there's no, um, issues with guest attendance, so there's no tickets at the door anymore. Um, and then clarification, I think there's a change of prom, yes, so the, um, due to the high number of guests that typically attend the prom, those forms have to be in, um, two weeks before the prom, so that it gives time to re-verify the age of the student, that they're in good standing if they're coming from another school. And there's a lot of guests at the prom, so they just want to get a little more time with that. Um, and then early release and arrival, the proposal is, um, students who owe five or more hours of detentions will have their privileges revoked until they serve their detention time. So again, it's just trying to get those, um, detentions to be taken more seriously. Juniors, for the early release and late arrival, um, I think it was around COVID, we added juniors. It used to be just seniors, and that's been working out really well, and it's actually helped on our ability to supervise students, um, if they're actually not taking advantage of that, so that's been added to the handbook now. And then there's something on fundraising, where all fundraising opportunities go through a formal proposal process and are submitted to Dan, um, for the athletic director. And that clarifying donations in excess of five hundred dollars, um, need to come before the school board. So just making sure that's in the handbook, people understand that. Um, open campus, if you owe five, you'll see a repeat, a currency of detention issues. Um, so if you owe five or more hours of detention, you don't get open campus privileges until you serve that. The section under drugs and alcohol, um, as I shared, the definition has been updated and expanded for our current vice, and that's just what's in the policy. Those were the. That was another detention thing, five or more hours of detention under, um, junior book, senior junior book, which is being revoked.
So.
Um, I'm just going back to the dance, I want some gear.
Never mind. It's like the guest farm, three days, three days, and then I was like looking for the two weeks and I see.
Yeah, that's awesome, yeah.
Other questions? Over to square four, so it's. I'm gonna give the year for these.
Yeah.
Um, then I will accept the order.
Option to approve the handbook updates for Pembroke Academy.
Second, second, let's go. All in favor of approving twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five proposed student handbook changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any objections? Right, and then we have, yeah.
Yes, so the, um, I think most of you know, we updated the, um, exec board heard, um, the presentation from, um, the work that the AI committee has been doing, and, um, we mentioned that they were going to be giving us a blurb. So the, we're really only talking about the top part of that now for student handbooks. The bottom part is what they're talking about for staff handbooks, but right now we're only talking about our student handbooks. Um, and they, the committee drafted general language to be included in student handbooks, understanding that there may be districts that felt like they wanted to make adjustments to this. Um, it's the first time that we're working into the handbook policies, the first time we've had a, um, a statement about it, and our committee has been putting in a lot of hours to work on best practices and acknowledging that AI exists, whether we want to embrace it or not. So for if it's going to exist, then let's make sure everybody's safe and using it appropriately. Um, so if you want to incorporate this section into the handbook without changes, you can do that tonight. If you want me to bring back suggestions to the committee about how Pembroke might like to make some changes, we can also do that.
Thoughts? I mean, to be honest, you probably know heck a lot more now because, than most of us here. But I, I mean, I'm of the thought, and I know it's, it's been used, it's like, you should do your own.
Yes.
And, you know, I've tried using it a couple of times when I've written something, just to look at what I've written, how can I, how might I write it better? I mean, I, I think that might be a legitimate use, but aside from that, I, I mean, how, how is anybody gonna know?
There, the teacher, yeah, there, Andy probably knows the most at this table, but there, um, there are programs that teachers run work through, and it will identify whether it's, and we're, you know, the English department has been wonderful. They said, you know, if you guys, if other subject areas are having a hard time, we'll help run the work through. Um, if you suspect, it's pretty easy to tell if, you know, you know your student's writing and you get a college level essay from someone who has never demonstrated that level of work, um, and they are able to identify whether that was generated by AI. And I think that's what we're trying to do, is make sure everybody has the tools that they need and that they use appropriately, uh.
And that's what I, I like, I would be in favor of putting this in, even if this is placeholder, because, I mean, it's still new, it's gonna, it's gonna be making all those things that we're doing all the time. Um, but specifically what I like about this is this is not a prohibition. Um, you know, it specifically says you need a teacher's permission if you're gonna use it. But the last bullet I think is the most important, and I'm gonna read that in case anybody's watching. "The use of generative AI must not hinder the student learning process, critical thinking, problem solving, collaboration, effective communication, or other skills necessary to be successful in or out of the classroom." To me, that's the heart and soul, like, this is a rule, like you said, you can talk good or bad about it, but it's here and, and kids are gonna use it. Um, and it is, I think, as with any topic, it's incumbent upon the school district to teach them how to use it in a productive manner, um, not as a brush. And so the way this is written, I think the committee did a great job. Um, I, I like it, I, I mean, I'm not.
I just, well, because we have a lot of conversations, we've done, but in college, there are things that we use and they encourage you to use it, because it gives you suggestions, it gives you cinnamon, in case you go out in the right path. But it does want everything through the filter, and if you're, if you're copying, they are.
Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, there's, it, it's changing the world, like, it, it can be used, it's, I think of it, and I don't use, I, I'm not a AI guy, um, I have a couple of friends in town that, that's what they do for a living, um, but it's, I think of it a lot like a calculator, um, it's important that, you know, in elementary school, you learn the skills to add and subtract, multiply and divide, and in my opinion, you should be able to do most of that stuff in your head most of the time. Um, but when you're out in the real world and you want to do stuff with big numbers, you're probably gonna blow up a calculator to make sure that you're accurate. That's what I use it for mostly, like, I write powershell code, and I can do that, but I can't even remember all the syntax off the top of my head. So rather than going and Googling it and trying to figure it out, I can ask a few C program to do it for me, and then I just could get to what I want, and I, I know enough about it to look at it and say, let's look what I want, or that's right. Um, so again, I just think it's all about appropriate use, and I think this is working very well.
There's a lot of experts on that committee that have spent a lot of time working on this, and it's appreciated. And every school district, um, in the S A U was represented on that team, which is great. I think people have done a great job working together. All right, so.
I'll make a motion to include the new AI policy in the current school handbooks.
Please, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other comments? All right, then all in favor of including the AI language from sample policy into the handbook, please say aye. I'm in, any opposed, any objections? I think that's it for E, are you?
Yes, there is no, um, proposed changes to three groups this year, so that's it.
Okay, so we got F is current year update, then, right?
Yes, so Amber updated her memo, um, for you, and your surplus went up a little bit from the last accounting, I think it's, there's a lot of writing on this page, is it eighty-one?
Eighty-one.
Yeah, eighty-one. So you're eighty-one thousand dollars. So again, this changes every two weeks, we're closely monitoring, um, things are still coming in. We still have to, we're always hunting down vendors at the end of the year to get us final invoices, um, so that we have the most accurate information. But that's where you're at right now.
And remind me, that number is before or after the surplus, or?
That is behind all, she, she took all of the, um, funding of trust funds into consideration with that, so that's before any money would go to those. So she, I meant, sorry, not trust funds, um, front ads, including revenue, not including funding here, um, this funds.
Okay.
Right, I don't think, let me get back, hold on, I don't want to give you more information.
Please, please.
Um.
Patients.
Approved two sixty-five. It will be funded in the art year, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, so.
So that was partially funded. Maybe she did, so, I just got this, yeah, I just got this, so I have a little thing, um.
So it's like the final surplus would be one seventy-one, four seventy-two, after.
For offsetting taxes, correct.
Yeah, so appropriation surplus of thirty-one K. Um, revenue surplus is three fifty-four K, and change the total appropriation surplus of four hundred and thirty-six thousand, and then two hundred and sixty-five thousand, trust fund, I mean, warrant articles, rather, um, leaving one seventy-one, four seventy-two. As of today.
Yeah, it means the same today, all warrant articles will be funded, as of today.
Right.
I know, we did, we did get some state checks in, so I think she updated the broken sheets, and that's where that. Just got this from her, so, um, read through it, and if you have questions, I can get you more information from Amber.
Um.
Yeah. The tuition.
Yep.
The potential shortfall when we tend to have a rate of citation. So is that saying that's pushing you to do something more?
She reconciles A R E tuition at the end of every year, and sometimes the districts owe us a little bit more from the estimate, and sometimes we owe them back money from the estimate, so I think that's what she's, what she's talking about.
So it's, it's on her, this is.
And it's.
Two.
No, it's okay, it looks like it's money that's, um, to reconcile for fiscal year twenty-two. It's, yeah, it's always one year behind, yeah.
Just saw.
Yeah.
Okay, um, let's, let's keep going to G, and then we'll sort the back too.
Um, G was just a, an informational piece that the twenty twenty-two final audit report came in, and we put it in your drive and posted it right away on the website for the public. Um, so now we're just waiting on one more report. Hopefully we get that soon, and as we've discussed, um, our auditor offered at the presentation that he made to come in when everything was caught up and kind of go through everything with you. Hopefully any concerns that have been noted will, will have been rectified by the time we get.
Questions, sorry. Okay. Um, Amy, if you said it, we don't want to put you in this bus as you said, Tom. So we skipped, we skipped, um, the electric buses, because we figured you would wanna need to charge out in that one.
Sure.
So we'll go back to four D.
Okay, um, so it's just an informational update at this point. Um, but as we discussed earlier in the year, uh, we have been now selected, and so we have the option. The, the sort of one of the pivotal reasons why we decided to go for it was because it's a non-binding thing, okay? Um, but we applied for five million dollars worth of funding for twenty-five electric school buses as a combination of the Pembroke School District and the Deerfield School District, District, and we got it. We were, um, one of about a half a dozen school districts that applied and got it in New Hampshire. Um, you know, millions and millions of dollars of funding was awarded, and so we got five of it. Um, it is a rebate program, but as I understand it, you don't actually have to expend five million dollars out of pocket to get the five million dollars back. Um, so it, it just called. So it is called a rebate, but it functions more like a grant. I want to coordinate with Patty. I think probably the best way to do this is to start to have an additional shared drive. But we don't, I think, have to talk about this during the meeting, I think we can do that offline. But then that way everyone can have access to what has started to be a little bit of a pile of documents and is likely going to be more of a pile of documents. I've reached out to Patty to establish a Deerfield contact. And what I really want to talk about most tonight is this has been a little bit of an Amy show, only because we have that quick deadline to apply for the grant. And I was very happy to do it, but both to share the work, but also to share the input. You know, I would like to talk about how to do that moving forward, you know? And I think we need to form some sort of like ad hoc committee. And so if everybody's on board with that, then we would just talk about the composition. Is it going to be something like the Hill School Committee? Is it going to be something different? I don't really have any preconceived ideas, only that it not be too big, you know? Because then it gets like unwieldy and hard to schedule and that sort of stuff. But that's what I think would be the next action item to move forward.
So let me ask this, what's what's Deerfield's role in this?
Sorry, one other important thing here. There's a two-year deadline to get this done. So just, that was one of the important considerations here. So we need to work at a steady pace, but there's nothing like, you know, we don't need to get it done this summer. We don't need to get it done this fall, you know, I just, I want everybody to be aware of that. Use it or lose it by that deadline, is what that deadline is. So we did not, the paperwork does not specify, you know, can't do this anyway, but like 12 and a half for Deerfield and 12 and a half for Pembroke. So that's one of the things we need to figure out, is how many for Deerfield, how many for Pembroke.
No, I need more from a committee, because the first thing that popped in my head when you were talking about that is like, well, let's just add a committee here, another two-person committee from our board. And then if Deerfield also did that, then you've got four people, that's decent model.
Yeah, I would like it to be a joint Deerfield and Pembroke committee. I think that's going to work best, because I, I think this is a joint project. It makes no sense for, in my mind anyway, although I'm open to, you know, being a minority opinion here and going a different route. You know, for Pembroke School District to have a 12-bus depot and do its own thing, and for Deerfield to have its own bus depot and do its own thing, and we're negotiating to hire bus drivers on our own, doing our own thing, Deerfield doing their own thing, you know, I mean, let's do it together.
Maybe, and I don't, I don't have the numbers, but is, could it be more than that? Could it be in SAU? All the elementarys, it's 25 and not, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we put in for the number of buses that Deerfield asked for, and I forget how many they asked for now.
Yeah, we, we have it in a previous amount of papers that I need to get to.
They asked for 11, so it was set for a specific amount of buses, and the other boards had already met before the deadline, and they did not hold a special meeting to join in, and that's why it was only Deerfield.
Gotcha.
Plus 25 is the limit for the grant program. So we got the maximums.
Put down the line, and once things were all, and we could look at expanding out, and we have you. Right. I'll just get a question, so the $5 million, that was 25 buses, so 500 green. Does it cover anything beyond the, like, the infrastructure?
So the answer is no. And the infrastructure beyond the bus is the charging equipment. I have, I'm drinking water from a fire hose in my learning curve right now. And so what I have learned is neither the charging equipment nor the buses are required to have roofs. You know, so all you really need is, right, you know, a flat surface with a fence, of course, because the buses and the charging equipment are valuable. But you could have something nicer if you wanted, you know, you could have a structure with a roof, or you could have asphalt instead of gravel, et cetera. Those are, there's a lot, a lot, a lot in the to-be-determined department. That's why the timeline here is years, not, you know, oh, let's sign on the dotted line next week. And recall, just as a reminder, we're working with Highland Fleets, and they, they finance the total upfront cost. So we are, we have the opportunity to never pay the full price of this project upfront, and to finance it over the lifetime of the equipment on a, you know, it's basically a subscription plan.
Like, just to own, maybe?
It's not necessarily even ever to own.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and so we're not going to be floating like a, you know, a $5 million bond or a $10 million bond, as I understand the program. Budgeting to be determined.
Okay. Other thoughts about manpower, I guess? Okay. Yeah.
I think we would have better luck for any of our own people, and they would want to be dedicated to a district. Seems like every other week, there's that one call now that there's not a driver for a bus.
Yeah.
Like, I think it could be a positive thing, maybe?
No, I agree, but I'm sorry, I was terribly unclear. Kind of like us, like, man, this. No, no, just like, do we want to vote on an official other committee for the board? Like, appointment of, you know, two people like we do for other stuff?
Yeah, I mean, I think if what we're saying for starters, I mean, I think we have to put an end date on it, but if we just understand that to get going, we would have, I would like it to be me and one other person from this board, and the contact who already stepped forward, who's, I'm so sorry, I have to look up her name.
Ellen.
Ellen, thank you. And one other person from Deerfield, that foursome, go forward, not making, you know, any binding decisions, which is kind of doing the work of information gathering, setting up the shared drive, et cetera. I think that's very workable and smart for some number of months.
I agree, I think, I think that makes all sense in the world, get a few people that have the time and the drive, and can bring us all back with information to make smart decisions, so. I guess we need a motion first to create that committee, and then we'll need motions to staff that committee.
I'll make a motion to create the Electric Bus Research Committee.
Sir, second?
Second.
Right, any questions? All in favor?
I agree.
Right, I'd like to nominate Amy on the newly formed Electric Bus Research Committee.
I accept.
So, second, option?
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor?
I'm in.
Bye, Amy. Right, does anybody want to grab that second spot?
I'd be willing to, but can I, before I really commit to it, can I look into, like, can I get the information that you have to look into it and make sure you're kind of going to have time to do that?
Yes.
Alright. So, put me on pause for, okay, next for you. So table a vote for a second member until our next meeting? Alright.
And obviously, we can't, should we like a motion to invite Deerfield into the subcommittee? Or do we just, Patty, can you ask, we ask Patty to explain, and you make it so?
Oh, yeah, I have a meeting next week with them, so I'll ask them to create the same committee with the idea that they're going to work with you. Definitely.
Great. Cool beast, that feels like progress.
Thank you all so much, this is really exciting.
Any other questions on this topic in general before? Okay. We don't want to.
You wanted to go back to the minutes.
Oh, yeah, so we did approve the May 7th and May 21st minutes before you all got here, but if you have anything, we can revisit. Thank you, Sammy. I think we're good then, are we on number five? Jump the gun, do that sometimes. Okay, then the board has, need to go to non-public section, we print some names, I would say 91-8, bullet three, roll the new rule of two. Small letters A, B, and C. A is the dismissed promotion, compensation, or disciplining of an employee for the investigation of any charges against him or her. B is the hiring of any person as a public employee, and C is matters which are discussed in public and likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. On a roll call, vote in non-public at 7:30 for Carrie.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Dean?
Yeah.
Melanie?
Yes.
And Amy, it's all those things, pick people out of.